Is there anybody here that wishes to speak tonight regarding this application? The Vitero subdivision, which is on 100 Stony Kill Road. Okay. All right. Our next item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing regarding Aguado subdivision. Entertained a motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
Motion's made second. It all in favor? Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Bill Polwell, I'm the engineer for the applicant, Dylan Aguado. For the public record, this is for the planning board. It's the same drawing you see up top. We're here tonight proposing a two lot subdivision for a 34.2 acre parcel, which is located on Ketchum Town Road. The access point to the property is just south of the Woodland Court intersection with Ketchum Town Road. As you can see from the drawing, there's a, in comparison to the overall parcel, there's a narrow piece that has access to Ketchum Town Road. We're proposing two lots for two single-family homes. And the two lots would be 17.6 acres, which would be basically decide dividing this parcel into two equal halves. Because the buildable area is further back into the property, we're proposing a shared driveway. So the shared driveway would be shared by both homeowners for each lot. With this property, there is an existing garage that's in the portion of the property, which is closer to Ketchum Town Road. And that garage is being used by the neighbor, the Bozeman's. We've had conversation with the board regarding this, and since the last meeting, we have worked, myself and Aguado's representatives, have been working with the Bozeman's representatives. And what we've done is we revised the shared driveway to move it over four more feet. That would give us 15 feet from the shed or garage to the proposed shared driveway. And what that'll allow us to do is to build the driveway and grade the driveway so that we wouldn't be close within three or four feet of the existing garage. Also with that, we've come to, you know, it seems to be the consensus that everybody's on board, that a garage would be conveyed over to the Bozeman. And that would be the land that would be three feet around it, in a rectangular fashion, back to their property. So we would have to modify the application to include that property line revision. So to summarize, we have been working with them, and we've come to a resolution where they would ultimately end up with the garage and the property immediately surrounding it. We would shift the driveway over so that it wouldn't have any impact or any close grading to their garage. And then finally, with this, with the subdivision, the two houses would be served by an individual well and septic system, which is consistent with all the other houses in the neighborhood.
All right. Any board members have any questions regarding this?
No.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, with respect to the negotiations, Jennifer Van Tyel was representing the Bozeman's, and Rod McCloud has been representing Mr. Aguado. And I participated in some of the discussions. So with respect to, you know, the agreement, which I think we discussed among the attorneys and the parties have since agreed to, this would be a lot line adjustment to carve out that one garage and ultimately totally, finally resolve the litigation that was, and the easement that was there. And then the, in order to keep the garage where it is, there would be a application filed with the ZBA to permit three feet, because it would be, was it 10 feet for accessory? Oh, no, it's bigger than 144. Right, so.
Which I believe is 25 feet.
Right, so they would go, you know, go for an applicant, go for a variance to permit the.
Right, so the limited, right, for the limited setback.
So with respect to seeker, that's actually a type-two action. So that ZBA, so the ZBA actually would not need a seeker determination. Because an individual lot line is a, is a type-two. How that pans out with respect to this subdivision, I mean, this.
Right, so how it, so the subdivision, so it's, basically it's a subdivision and a lot line realignment now at this point? Because the application's going to get modified.
So the only thing that was requested with inclusion of the ZBA under the seeker.
Does it, right, does it need?
Individual setback, is this also a type-two?
Have a question. Have a question. Is there an existing building permit for that garage?
The garage is way before zoning. So it was probably, I mean, the garage is probably from the third.
Yeah, so it's been there for forever. Now you're just trying to legalize it to get it onto that. The people that it belongs to are trying to legalize it to get it onto their property now.
What it was is there was an adverse possession lawsuit, which was settled.
Right, I understand. I understand what happened, yeah. I just don't know how they got built to begin with. That's the problem I'm having with it.
Yeah, no, it was long before, I assume the.
Brains? Long before brains?
I assume what happened was the garage existed before the new lot.
Right.
The lot was actually in fact the farmland that people lived in that house.
Right.
1821, for that land that was right at, was their original farming.
Yeah, so the lot was carved off and existing.
Okay, so, so the question now comes in is, so the application's got to get modified a little bit. And I mean, we can have, I mean, tonight, we can, we can open up the floor for public comment.
Sure.
We can close the public comment. But then they still need to go back for variance.
Correct.
Prior to us taking final action on this, on this application.
So the intent is to get an application to the ZBA so that the ZBA hears the matter at its February meeting. And.
Then the ZBA, the ZBA is a two-step process, so.
Yeah, now does the ZBA have two meetings in February? So the ZBA will have two meetings in February, whereas I think this board only has one.
Yeah.
You have the first meeting in February, and then you go to March.
Right. But this will make the first meeting in February for the ZBA? Okay, so by the time, so by the time March rolls around.
They could be done unless they don't make the first. But we actually have a meeting in January.
Okay. All right, so technically, at this point, it's just a matter of, let's see if there's any public comment, I guess, at this point. And we'll go from there. So if there's anybody that wishes to speak on behalf of this application tonight, please come up to the podium.
All right, I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but I live to the south of this, on the other side of the power line.
Okay, here, state your name and address for the record, please.
Penny Scouton, I'm at 118 Ketchum Town Road.
All right, thank you.
I have lived there for 57 years, and when I was born, that road was a dirt road. Ketchum Town Road has problems right now, and I don't think it needs more homes. There, and my numbers are not, are not exactly right, but in, I think, the last three to four years, I've had six accidents in front of my house, all with property damage. Two within 16 hours, and those were just recent. Two were drunk drivers. There is a roving band of menacing and harassing four-wheelers and ATVs on the road and on the power line. And they, no one can seem to control them or make them stop. My house is sort of, that property and the power line sort of wraps around behind my house. And so they've, when they're not trespassing on my property, they go and sit behind the house on the power line where they're not on my property, and they rev their engines and stuff. There are pickup trucks that go in the back and get stuck. And it takes sometimes up to 48 hours to get them out. And then it's rev, cars revving, and men screaming and yelling, and it can go on all night. My neighbor at 108 has had damage done to their property by people trying to pull vehicles out. My other concern, having lived there and loving to be in the country, and I know that everybody wants to move up to the country now, but you're destroying the country by putting more houses on it. There won't be any more country left. For the first time ever, I've had bears on my property. And I had two very close encounters with them unintentionally. So that's been a problem. Where are the, where are all the wildlife going to go? What's the effect on the water table if we're all on wells? I've had some minor issues so far, but I think if we keep adding homes to the area that are on wells, it's just going to, you know, do more damage. And then if they're pouring chemicals on their lawn and all that stuff. Again, I probably have no say in this, and I can't stop progress, but I am really concerned for what used to be a wonderful life on Ketchum Town Road has been, my peace has been absolutely destroyed already. And until we control these other issues, I don't think you should bring in more homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak on behalf of this application this evening? Okay, seeing as none. Did we want to, did you want to discuss the letter, actually, hold on. Actually, there was no letters, correct, from the staff this time around, correct, for this application?
We didn't have, with the public hearing scheduled, we were stuck with the same plans at the time because at the submission deadline, we weren't through the process of what we were going to do with the neighbor. So that's why we continued.
Right, so you just left it as is, so there was no re-submission?
But for our next, for our next meeting, we would have revised plans.
Okay.
Bill, do you know where the power lines that she had mentioned are on the regional map? Are they, are they shown on the regional map? Are they farther away than that? Is that, yes, I mean, that makes the most sense, yeah.
Yeah, the parcel immediately to the south is owned by Central Hudson.
So the question comes is, you still have to make the submission to the ZBA?
And we also want to include the lot line revision.
Right.
Anything from D E C, or is that still?
No, we've heard back from D E C, and we're in the process of addressing their comments right now.
Okay. All right, I mean, does it make sense to leave the public hearing open and adjourn this to a future date? Do we feel we need to do that, or?
I don't, I don't know that it's necessary, but seeing as they do need to go to the ZBA and get those approvals, I don't think that it's a priority, adjourning it for the first meeting in March, and then receiving that submission from you, reviewing it, opening the public hearing, supposed to be the time.
May you feel confident that your items with the D E C would be addressed?
You ready to the second meeting in March, just in a sec?
Dylan Aguado, our agreement is that they were supposed to be at the January 24th ZBA meeting. And we're hoping to come back here in February to get some kind of resolution. As, you know, everything is basically set. We heard back as far as federal wetlands, that those are all good. We'll have an email through this week. D E C wetlands, like Bill said, were, responded to our comments. So we're, you know, we're trying to move this along and get some kind of resolution going.
Yeah, in terms of the.
Pretty simple lot line adjustment in a week.
Yeah, I mean, no matter what, it has to go before the ZBA before we can act on it.
Exactly, that's why we're trying.
Yeah, and at this point, I mean, I don't think there's enough time to get onto the ZBA's agenda for next week. Right, I mean.
It's already Wednesday.
Yeah.
I guess the only question I have is, what was the, what's the nature of the comments you see from D E C? You know, setting that, I mean, the question is, the driveway crosses a deep, you need a D E C crossing for the driveway?
That's what we submitted for, and Bill commented. They're looking for us to eliminate some of the drainage in the buffer. They actually don't want to see that. They'd rather keep that area in the buffer more green and more natural and undisturbed. So just some grading changes that we're going to make to actually make the grading a lot less than what we had proposed. Number two, they wanted more details on the pulver, so we've gone through all the drainage calculations to do that. So we, it was more of dot your i's and cross your t's with D E C. But there was nothing in there that we thought we wouldn't be able to overcome.
Hey, Bill, could you just provide a copy of the D E C comments, just for the board's records?
Sure.
Then that way the board is aware of what the D E C has.
Yeah, so we know exactly where we're.
No, because, I mean, because basically if you don't get the D E C crossing, you can't get back there.
Right, you can't.
We certainly can't sign off on it.
Right, exactly, right. So I mean, even with that, we're still looking at it. I mean, it's, I mean, I think it's kind of, we're kind of in a tight spot right now, and it has to be put off until that, the first meeting in March. Which is, what be, what's our first March meeting? September, March 6th, okay. Yeah, so I mean, March, I mean, that would be the earliest we can get you back anyway. But at the same time, the Z, you know, you could work everything out with the ZBA.
Yeah, that's reasonable, as long as you think early March, we could get some kind of resolution there.
Yeah, well, I'm hoping by, I'm hoping by the March meeting, you have everything resolved, you know, with the submission, and then we can take action at that point. Okay?
Yeah.
I believe at this point, unfortunately, we're, I think, is there, you know, just to be cautious, we're going to go ahead, we'll adjourn the public hearing. You know, if you guys are, you know, if there's no, well, I think it's in our best interest to adjourn a public hearing. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing to March the 6th.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motions made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is a motion carried.
One, one other request from Ms. Van Tyel is if the board should care, there's no obligation to do it, but if the board would make a recommendation or a recommendation to the ZBA regarding the setback variance, if the board wants to take a position or not with respect to the variance.
How does the board feel about making a recommendation? So whether or not we're in favor of it or not.
How big a variance is it?
I think it's 22 feet.
Yeah.
I don't see a problem with that.
It's 32 acres. It's basically to correct the situation that's already there. I mean, it's kind of, it's not, it's not like it's a brand-new structure going up, and we're saying, you know, hey, this is, you know.
They're building on 32 there.
Right, right, and it's just for the, this has just to do with the, the existing structure, has nothing to do with the new structure. So.
Correcting the existing situation.
Okay, so somebody, somebody want to make a, make a motion to.
So moved.
To grant, or to, to make recommendation to the ZBA to, that we're in favor of the variance. So, the motions made, seconded by Lynn, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay. All right, so then on March the 6th, we should have a, we should have the revised submission in front of us with the, with the zoning amendments, or the zoning variances hopefully be granted. Okay. Okay. The next item on the agenda this evening is a public scoping session regarding site plan and special use permit for Downey Energy Liquid Propane Storage.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Dennis Lynch for the applicant. Present tonight is our planner, Jackie Hakes. I just want to say what we're not here for tonight. We're not here to ask for a single approval to build anything. We're not here to ask for any approval of plans. In fact, we're not here for a public hearing. As the chairman indicated, this is a public scoping session on a secret process in which we have the scope of the issues. So again, we're only here for the scoping issues. We welcome the public's comment on the scoping issues. We have our planner here to tell you, if you'd like to hear it, what we've done and presented already to the town. I think we've done an exhaustive list of potential issues. And after the public provides comments on the scoping issues, we'll sit down, have the planner sit down together, and with the board as you wish, and your attorney as you wish, and try to finalize it. So I only ask that the chairman would like to hear from our planner. The only thing I would ask is that, you know, if comments are made beyond what the scoping issue is, we're going to be back here for a public hearing on several issues. Will be probably two or three more public hearings, but this is a public scoping session. So would, would the chair wish to have our planner make a brief comment on the scoping issue? Or do you want to hear it right from the public, whatever your pleasure is?
We could discuss the public scoping first, so that the, so that the public can hear what's being discussed. And then once we, you know, once that's all been discussed, we can turn around, open the floor up to the public so they can make comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we welcome the public's comments. We'll be taking notes about those. If I could ask Jackie Hakes, our planner, to come up and briefly talk about the scoping issues and what we've done.
Thank you, Dennis, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, members of the board. I'm Jackie Hakes. I'm the Director of Planning Services at M J Engineering. And I've been brought into the team to assist in the preparation of an environmental impact statement, something I've been doing for the past 22 years. And so happy to be here and talk about the draft scoping document that was submitted to you, I believe, in advance of the November meeting where you set the scoping session here. So the scoping document is set forth as part of the procedural requirements of an environmental impact statement preparation. It's NYCRR, Part 617, that, that kind of dictates the steps in the process that we are, that we are following for this. The scoping document identifies what will be evaluated as part of the environmental impact statement. The draft scoping document before you reflects those topics and issues that you had identified in your positive declaration in April, I believe it was April 4th, in 2022. And so that's where this list of topics to be evaluated came from and was generated from. And just for the benefit of the members of the public, that those topics to be evaluated in terms of existing conditions, potential impacts, and identification of potential mitigation measures include groundwater, habitat, flora, and fauna, surface water, that includes wetlands, floodplains, the stormwater discussions, community character, community plans, transportation systems, and human health. So those are the key topic areas that are identified in the draft scoping document. In addition to that, as part of an E I S, we will identify alternatives and evaluate those, as well as what we call summary of impacts and mitigation, which include potential growth-inducing impacts, cumulative impacts, irreversible commitment of resources, identified unavoidable adverse impacts. These are all typical seeker items that are included in an environmental impact statement. And then ultimately summarize any impacts and propose mitigation as a result of that. So we are hoping to hear today from the public as part of the required scoping session, public scoping session, with regard to any, any topic areas that haven't already been identified within the draft scoping document. So that's a brief overview of what's before you and what we're hoping to hear from the public today. Happy to answer any questions, if you have any. Otherwise, looking forward to hearing from the community.
All right, so the board members have any questions regarding what was described so far?
No.
No.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so at this time, I'll open up the public, I'll open up the floor to the public. If there's anybody that wishes to speak on behalf of this application, any of these items that were discussed, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
My name's Franz Blaine. Someone's on, owns the property, the wetlands on 219 Smith Town, the lower section. So I guess, you know, the biggest concern is, I know he's got 90,000 gallons of propane sitting there, probably within 2,000 feet of his property. I guess there is, you know, it's very, very concerning for us, is what's, you know, I'm sure there's a lot of safety measures in place for these tanks, but is this right area for this type of thing? I mean, 90,000 pound, 90,000 gallons of propane, that's a lot of propane. If there was a leak, he's a low car, that's where it's going to go. And what kind of prevention do we have for that? I mean, I know there's safety precautions probably on all these tanks. But the question is, it's always human intervention, right? Human error, that can happen. So what's the outcome if something doesn't happen? You've got evacuations, there's no room for evacuations and all that, so. Plus, it's concerning for him right there. You know, what, what do we have as preventing any harm to his area, plus them themselves?
Okay.
I mean, let's, you know, it's not really a place, from my part, it's not really a place for these propane tanks.
So.
I understand it's commercial property, but there's a lot of impacts there that, you know, concerns for us to, what can happen. Let me say, there's human, humans are the other part of the air. I'm sure the safety part of the tanks is fine, but you still have a lot of people in and out of there. And in today's environment, there's a lot of people that don't want jobs. And you're kind of, qualifications aren't there like they used to be. Right, you're hiring people because you need job skills, so it's a little different environment now today, as it was here in the old days. So it's a big concern for us, and in that type of area, for what you're finding there. Right across the street, right across Nine, you have Splashdown, it's got thousands of people, a couple thousand people in there at any time, right? So if there was evacuation, a leak or evacuation, how are you going to evacuate those people within the timeframe? You know, is there fire stations equipped to handle this? If there was something to happen, there's, you know, there's a lot of questions, and a lot of concerns. and a lot of concern for us as far as the neighbors around there too. And I see he's probably wanted a more, important, because he's a low, he's the low level there to that propane. If there was something leak, it's going to go right down there. He's, he's on downhill from that property, the lowest level.
Yep.
So, it was a big concern.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll have them address that. Okay, anyone else?
Hi, my name is Dan Silvestri. Some of you are familiar with me, I've been here about a year ago. Had a meeting prior, a subsequent meeting with, um, Carrie, Al. But, uh, I have three properties in the vicinity of this, this particular, uh, LP tank farm. Five, one's 500 feet, uh, which I have tenants. Uh, one is my business, which is 800 feet, and I have a vacant property, which is, uh, about a thousand feet. I don't know how much I should say. I, I've mentioned, I said a lot last time, so do I have to repeat myself, or is it on the record that I have some concerns with that being?
The, the issues that you had when, um, that you had discussed at that meeting, actually, I believe we were on Zoom that time.
Okay.
Um, but those were all put into the record. It was, I believe I asked you to forward that to the secretary, all your information.
Yep.
Um, that you had, that you had put together, and I believe, um, B, is it correct that that was all put into the record? Okay.
All right, so it, for the sake of time, it doesn't make sense to repeat that.
Do you, do we have that letter in the, in that to the scoping record as well? With your permission, would you like us to use the previous?
Yes, yeah, I mean, there has been some design changes, from what I understand, of the tanks being moved from above ground to below ground. And a lot of my concerns was, as a, being a volunteer firefighter for 48, almost 48 years, I, how do you attack something or treat something like this? I know the, uh, Carrie offered some training, but, uh, this, this is something, this is a specialty item here. LP is a, is a heavy fuel. It's, those tanks, whether you bury them or not, yes, you solve, there's pros and cons of burying them. Your air, probably, uh, hazards are, are avoided, but being below ground, um, and again, I'm not familiar, I am not pretending to be anybody that knows anything about this, so I just have concerns that, I have to have some assurances with this. Some of the cons, like I said, my biggest concern is if there's a leak, it's going to go in the ground. How do you deal with a, a leak underground? I'm sure it's a little more difficult than above ground leaks. So, beans heavier than air, that gas may, it will migrate to the lowest point. And again, being ignorant, I don't know what happens if it gets seeps in. It's not a, a liquid, so it's not going to be pollution, but it's a gas. Does the gas stay in the ground? Does it evaporate out of the ground and fill the, the lower, uh, the layer of air above the ground and then seep into low, uh, the wetlands, uh, next to it? And it will, that is, the wetlands are the lowest point in this case. Looking at the typo, typography, looks like there's probably about four foot difference from where the tanks are to the, uh, the, the wetlands. Um, there's some geo-hazards maybe associated with burying the tank. Probably not, we don't have to worry about too much in the way of, uh, earthquakes or something, but there could be some ground shifting that could cause a leak. Corrosion issues is another one of my concerns. I'm sure they have cathodic protection, but, uh, but Central Hudson has gas main, metal gas mains, and they have cathodic protection. And you, as you know, Wap majors experienced a lot of gas leaks that migrated into the home, people's homes, and they had a lot of, uh, had to redo the gas line. So again, will I see it in my lifetime? Probably not. I'm in the fourth quarter here, so, but what about people that, uh, have to live in the area? So the, those without, and then, then again, the fire, how, being a firefighter, I don't know how to fight a fire like that. I'm sure a trainer's, but there were some concessions made about, uh, which were, were good, was a good start, about putting a fire hydrant next to the, uh, tanks. That wasn't good enough. Carrie came back and offered to put a fire pump in there to help us. Main issue with that, though, it's about 135 feet from the tanks. The EGR guide for firefighters to approach this thing recommends that we be about 1,500 feet away from this thing. And being, we're downhill on the, if it does leak, we're going to drive the fire apparatus right into the, uh, the plume, and we might be the source of ignition. So, again, it's just things I'm throwing out there that I don't know about, but just enough to be dangerous. And, uh, that, that's, that's some of the things I have. If they could answer these questions for me, that, that'd be great.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, um, Mr. Silvestri submitted a letter, um, to the planning board dated 3/15/2021, which was, um, stamped as received by the planning board on 3/17/2021.
Okay, thank you for your clarification.
Kind of like to take that letter and add it to the, to the record of, of comments received on this document.
Okay. Yep. Okay.
If there was a, any ignition on the tanks, we have to maintain 500 gallons per minute on each tank. Being as there's two tanks, and again, I don't know how, how we do this with the tank being on the ground. To prevent them from blipping, we had to establish a water source. They were, uh, Carrie was going to have a 30,000 gallon underground storage tank, and that, based on maybe moving a thousand gallons, that would give us 30 minutes of time to have that, that tank burn off, because you can't put out an LP gas, you have to let it burn out. So there is no water mains in that area. You can't, uh, set up a, uh, we have, but that would be Houstonville's Fire District. They'd have to call and mutilate at least five other, perhaps a lot of other ones. And now that emergency response turns into an evacuation response. And the EGR book suggests that we evacuate 1.4 miles radius. And I don't have to tell you how many businesses and, uh, population is in 1.4 miles of that site. So it would be a major undertaking. It, it can't be done. So, and again, that's an extreme case, but accidents happen, and you gotta be prepared for it.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else that would like to, uh, comment? On this tonight? Please step up to the podium, uh, your name and address for the record.
My name is Jeremy Blaine, uh, 219 Smith Town. My dad just made a couple comments about, uh, safety and all his stuff. Same thing as you, Dr. Silvestri. Uh, so safety aside is, I bought my, this property, 219 Smith Town, in 2015, and when I decided to buy this property, I looked at all the areas. I looked at all, Fishkill, Wap majors, Poughkeepsie, Hyde Park, Cold Spring, all these areas. I liked this area. I liked that property. I liked everything about it. With this going through, it imposes a lot more risk not to just me, to all the other residential houses in the area as well, that I didn't sign up for when I bought the house. If I was to buy it, my property, and knew there was something next to it, I would be accepting that risk. I'm not accepting this risk any more than being imposed on me. So, yeah, there's all safety and this and that, and negate, negate, uh, negate any kind of issues later on down the road, but I'm sure that happens with every place that gets, uh, whether it be oil or gas or anything like that. There's always safety positions, but there is accidents. So, uh, like I said, this is more of a risk imposed on me now, not me accepting it. So that's all I was going to say and add to that, so.
All right, thank you. Just please step up to the podium.
Hi, Georgia Delvecchio, at 221 Smith Town Road. I actually share a parcel or subdivision with Jeremy's locations, but we all live kind of on that road. Um, we just built a house back in 2018, right before the pandemic, then isolated there with our two young girls. Um, we literally put all of our money into building a brand new home for our family, which we hadn't, we picked that location, never thought that it addresses anybody else. We probably would have never even thought about going there with my young family if I thought we were in a close location of something that was a potential risk to us on that level of magnitude. We didn't have to build a house there, we didn't have to sink all of our money into that house. We could have built anywhere else. Probably would have just looked at it as a red flag and moved on. Moving forward, my other concern is, what about other people now looking to purchase our house if we ever to sell that home? I know that that's a red flag as well. Our property values continue to go up because of all of the movement in the economy and whatnot, but I am also just thinking to myself now, is the town going to, or is Downey electric, or propane going to compensate us because of how somebody may look at that as opposing risk to our property values and to how that may affect the safety and welfare of everybody around? I'm curi-, I'm just curious to know how that would be a ripple effect, because it is a red flag. And so how does that now get considered when there's reassessments and whatnot, being in close proximity to a high-risk environment, where there may not be all the fail safes that are in place? This was very educational for me tonight to hear all the other things that what would go into if that ever did actually occur. I'm just thinking to myself, let's take something that is relatively high-risk and sink it into one of the hearts of our community, considering it's right on Route 9, around all of the things. But I will tell you that we picked where we were because we are centrally located. We are three out, we are three minutes from Adams. Let's talk about how many people just circulate there in a general day. So I'm not just talking about my home, the fact that I work from home, the fact that I have young children that are there, but I'm just thinking about the bigger picture and also how that would maybe have the ripple effect if we ever were to sell our home again, and how somebody may visualize that proximity to our home and to everybody else in the community. I don't know if I made any new points, I'm sure this is an emotional thing to say, but I do feel like our homes, our safety, our property values, nothing gets more personal than that. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else? Okay, seeing there's no one else. So we'll have a discussion, I guess, regarding some of these items. Malcolm?
Sure.
All right.
Um, I mean, I think we've got a lot of useful detail from, uh, from Dan, uh, both the presentation and also the light that he submitted initially. Um, we touched on a lot of issues that the board, uh, discussed and considered during Part Two, uh, to name a few, um, potential leaking situations and how that might affect the surrounding groundwater, surface water, or flora and fauna. I, I know another big issue for the board and for the public this evening was, uh, was safety. What, what an emergency situation would look like, either in a, a leak or blabby situation? What, what, what are those emergency situations? What do they look like, and, and how would they be addressed? Specific in that would be a discussion of, um, training, but also capabilities, current equipment, capabilities, size and force of, uh, the local fire department, and who would be responding in sort of the more catastrophic, uh, emergency situation? What that evacuation plan would look like and how that would impact the surrounding transportation networks? And, um, and, and a little bit more technical information about, um, the, the suppression system, whether or not it has municipal water or a suppression tank, um, the proximity of that suppression tank to the site of a potential emergency situation. That's, that's my starting point. Unfortunately, I don't think that we can consider, uh, potential impacts to, um, uh, property values. I'm sure that is a consideration, particularly at the town board level when they're considering, um, instituting new zoning. But for seeker purposes, we can't look at that, and we ran into that with previous applications, and the, the concept of a project and how it could or could not impact property values.
Yes, but this, right, but this secret, you know, this secret process that we're doing is for, is not only just for, you know, the site plan, but is also associated with this, um, uh, with the, the zoning changes.
Absolutely.
So why wouldn't it be appropriate to address the property values? Because if the town board doesn't address it, because they're not doing their own secret evaluation.
Considered, but it cannot be something that is considered as a part of the environmental
Yeah, DEC has basically said that for seeker purposes, it's not, it's a speculative issue. You know, that, and it's beyond the scope of seeker. So there's a number of cases on that issue.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, we, we've heard the comments from the public, we're going to, uh, we've written those down, we're going to listen to the tapes. I would ask if the, uh, for this public scoping session, let it be closed and allow us, uh, to meet with the planners, uh, the town attorney, your, your, your chair, and put together a scope that would embrace everything that we should be doing. I think all the comments, uh, or most of the comments made tonight are already in our scope, but I would ask that the public scoping session be closed right now. Let us get to work, let us get the scope, and then what happens next is that we have to draft what's called an environmental impact statement, and then that comes back to the board for a public hearing. And then there's a final, uh, environmental impact statement where there's another public hearing usually too. So I'd ask if we, we'll be allowed to continue.
No problem. I, I will close, we can close the public scoping session, I have no problem with that.
Thank you, Chairman.
In, um, in the light of, um, you know, discussion with staff outside of a public meeting, um, I don't believe that the board's in favor of that at this point.
Whatever the board wants to do.
I think with it, with the, you know, with what's going on currently, um, whatever discussions we're going to have, we're going to have it in public, uh, at a public meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, if we share and circulate drafts?
You can circulate drafts around as long as the board, as long as the board is fully, is fully aware of it. But in terms of having meetings and discussions regarding the draft, um, I believe that should all be done during public session only.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I mean, we can't discuss the public's comment during a public session because it keeps on going on and on. What we can do?
I get it, but if we're, I, I feel, we feel more comfortable if it's done in public, um, as opposed to being done outside of the public.
What we do is we'll copy the planning board and everything we submit in response to what the, what the town wants. Happy to do it.
Okay.
Thank you. So if that's the case, then we'll just simply get together with our comments and response, email them to everybody here, and then eventually we'll come back with, uh, what they call a draft environmental impact statement. It could be months, but we'll be back. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. So at this point.
So I guess, I guess actually a formal motion to close the public scoping.
Oh, yeah. So, sorry. Entertainer motion to close the public scoping session at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, thank you.
Chairman, um, would you like me to prepare the final scope, and would you like to discuss the date of meeting at which time you would like to entertain that?
To set a date?
To set a date for, uh, for me to submit to you a final.
Well, to submit, you're going to submit a draft to us to, yeah, so the, we can do that. When, how long do you think it would be before?
Um, I mean, we have another meeting in, in January, but we're going to do the first meeting in February.
We don't have, no, January, this is it for January, we're, we're, um, February, we have one meeting.
The first meeting in February.
Uh, so we're, it'd be the first meeting in February, or this, uh, first meeting in?
December.
Right, yeah, I know, there's only one, then there's the, it would go to March.
It would be the next available meeting, I think we can have some.
Okay. So you, I, propose, you proposing to submit the draft at that time?
Yeah, I would submit it to you and the applicant in advance.
Okay. All right, we can do that if you're.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. Next item on the agenda, um, was to be the Lucari subdivision.
No, it's not that.
No, it's not that.
At the request of the applicant, they've asked to be removed from the agenda this evening, and we'll come back with another submission at a later date. Next item for discussion this evening would be the Telegrasso subdivision.
Brian's Dakota, Dan's Dakota Engineering, Torre Groso subdivision. This one floated around 2005-ish, 2008-ish, three-lot subdivision, just a area over five acres, one existing house on the property now served by central water connection and individual septic. We're on All Angels County Road. What we're proposing is to, to subdivide this into two new residential parcels. This application got so far with the planning board, I believe we had final approval and we were in a position to actually make my ours, but for whatever reason, we didn't cross the finish line and actually file the map. So, obviously, we're here to kind of restart the process and go through it again. A lot of work was done on the subdivision throughout the process. There was a, a small stormwater management area that handled any increases from impervious with the development that we're proposing. There's a drainage easement over it, so there is access into the, into lots two and three to maintain that facility. We did soil tests with the health department, septics were designed. I think the only modification we're gonna make to this plan versus the plan that was originally looked at by the board is newer technologies are out there and there's different flow rates for the septic systems. So, we're gonna probably just redesign the septic systems to be smaller and a little bit more cost-effective for a potential buyer. These two lots will be served by an extension of central water to the house. I talked to Bill Trifilo, he's the permit engineer for Dutchess County Department of Public Works, went over the application to him, with him, showed him that there's no changes to the driveway location from the original approval. He said it looks great. I believe he's also issued correspondence that I can forward to the board in our next submission that says, looks good, just apply for a permit. So, it's kind of a, a different situation here where there's been a lot of work done on this application and just kind of shaking the rug on it and getting back in front of you.
Okay. Is any, any of the board members have any questions regarding, regarding this application at this point?
No.
No.
No, okay.
So, I went back and checked the records and it looks like there was a conditional approval issued probably in 2007 or 2008. There was a common driveway easement document that was drafted in 2008, so, you know, a lot of the, a lot of that stuff-
A lot of stuff has been-
Been done, you know, it may change a little bit, I don't know if you're, are you moving the driveway?
Everything stays the same.
So, you know, there was performance agreement and bond calculations done. Be interested to see what the bond calculations are.
Yeah, that would have to be updated for today's rates, I would, yeah, because 2007 rates are not gonna be-
Close, right?
Close.
Did you have something?
I can't see from here, do they have backyard? It looks like, from here, it looks like the houses are really like the last.
Yeah, the house, the houses are pushed up.
Are there the backyard?
We could probably pull it forward and maybe do more of a garage under type, give it more of a backyard.
It just, they could double forward from the planning to their homes to create something with no backyard and the average person, plenty of amount of pool, but they can't put pool or shed, because in our zoning, you can't have anything forward of the house. So, they can't put shed, they won't move from shed to their lawn, and they will build a pool, and it looks like the houses are right at the setback.
Yeah, you can pull it forward, go to garage under, different style house.
That should be a real concern for the law.
Okay. All right. Yes, I mean, that, that would probably be helpful. So, where do we go with, so the, let's just think of something here, the, do we need to circulate for lead agency? That's-
Well, I guess-
I'm just, because of the, because of the action itself, right?
I, I was involved in litigation with a 25-year-old negative declaration once. And, you know, the courts had said that, you know, it actually was still valid unless, you know, you could demonstrate that things had changed. But, you know, technically, the prior negative declaration could theoretically still be used. Notwithstanding that though, I think I'd still consult with the outside agencies-
Right.
-to see if they have any comments with respect to it. You know, technically, the procedure is to make a determination of, as to whether or not that prior negative declaration should be rescinded for any reason.
Right.
Well, they have to get border health approval again.
Right. But I mean, for seeker, and for seeker purposes, the health department doesn't really-
Right, they're not, yeah, they, they don't care. I just, I was just thinking, as we, we did have that discussion earlier, I mean, it's really, to circulate for lead agency, I mean, they're still gonna need to provide, you know, the health department, DP, DPW, they still need to provide all that to get a final approval anyway.
Is there any DEC issues here?
They need an NOI.
There's no wet, there's no wetlands.
But they need to get covered under the general permit.
But-
They need to get covered under the-
Under the general permit, yeah, yep, stormwater.
And I think we even submitted a basic script for this application, so we-
So, I mean, for purposes of seeker, I think, you know, you can, we can theoretically live off the old seeker determination.
Right.
Unless, you know, I'll go back and pull it, see what it, we can go back and pull it and see what it says.
Or we can just do it again. I mean, it's, I'm not imagining red lines, if there's pushback on here, we can explore using the, the old seeker documentation, but it wouldn't change things very much to just do it again. Declare our intent to lead agency and wait thirty days and then take a look at, you know, the facts and make probably the same determination that was made a decade ago of, of the negative declaration, and then we wouldn't have to worry about that. But, I mean, it's a, it's a more-
Yeah, I just, yeah, I'm just thinking, because, I mean, this is, again, it's been, this has been previously, you know, if it's gotten as far as it's gotten, I mean, to circulate for lead agency, to go through all that process and just forego that and just go to a public hearing, because me, I mean, I mean, there's really no issue with what's here other than moving the houses forward at this point. And if we have a public hearing to get some public comment, we can kind of go through that process, because if it's, we can review the, the old seeker determination, but all the, all the, all the different people have to sign off anyway on the same application.
Yeah. I, I have certainly have, have no issue using the old seeker determination and, and, you know, if one of those agencies, if anything goes foul, we'll be right back to the part of the document.
I mean, procedurally, in some respects, it's, it's more or less not very different. The only, the only difference is if you use the old seeker determination, what, what you're, what you would do is you would say, here's an old seeker determination, send it to the involved agencies and say, do you have any reason why we should rescind a prior negative declaration?
Yeah.
As opposed to, hi, here's a new application that came in.
Yeah.
Do you have any objection to us being lead agency?
Lead agency, right.
So, I mean, it's, it's kind, you know, and they're gonna most likely to provide the same comments.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, I guess the only question is, from the applicant's point of view, my one concern is I suspect that some of the, you know, DPW and health department may not know how to deal with-
Yeah, that's why I think it might be-
With something that's out of the ordinary.
Right, right.
Instead of the load they get every day instead of the load they're receiving.
Right. So, that's the only, I mean, that's the only downside frankly to using the old negative declaration, is somebody's gonna probably call and say, what does this mean? Because I don't think it, I don't think it really, you know, raised many issues last time. It's a three-lot subdivision, you know, with a common, is there an existing house or is it all of its-
There's an existing house.
Yeah.
And we prepared a comment letter, we'll, we'll read it into the record, you have a copy of that right now.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. And most of our comments, they're administrative or detail-oriented in nature, none of our comments are going to push this where it would have to be reconsidered-
Yeah.
-by outside agents.
It's the same thing on our, there's a few housekeeping comments, it's nothing to mention.
I mean, if you schedule it for the March meeting, that's thirty days and you could be lead agency and be-
Yeah.
You know, we can copy the old negative declaration and reissue it.
Okay, slap a new date on it.
Yeah, slap a new date on it.
Yeah, no, as I say, if it's, so we could, if we circulate, do that and then have the public hearing in March, whatever it is, it'll be that much further along at that point. As I, I just, you know, it's something that's been here already, I just don't see, you know, I just like kind of move the process along, so we're not multiple, multiple meetings.
After we're having the discussion, I think, you know, kind of using the old neg, neg deck may create more issues than it solves.
That's my, my thought. It seems where it should be a simpler process, but I think doing the thing that we do every meeting-
Right.
-will somehow, will still be faster than, you know, pull it all down.
Yeah, my only, my only concern is that if we don't circulate to health department or something, then, because they've done it in the past, you know, they may raise the issue, well, this seeker determination is from 2007.
That's what I don't want to happen.
Is there a statute on it?
So, let's, all right, so-
Well, that's gonna happen. I know the person.
Right, because-
All right, so the first, so the first, let's, all right, so the first issue would be is to, so I'm gonna make a motion to authorize the secretary to circulate for lead agency for this project. Okay. Motion's made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. So, being it's a, a repeat application, do you feel that you, because at that point we'll be beyond the thirty-day window, do you feel you'd be, would you be ready to do a public hearing for the, which, what's the date in March again?
March 6.
What?
The first one.
The first one.
March 6.
March 8.
6.
6, sorry. Would you be ready for March the 6th then?
Right, yeah, absolutely.
That's good for you.
Just one question, do you know, was there a county work permit issued for the draft?
The work permit is never issued because we've never got a contractor lined up, but we, we do have an email, officially, a blessing of the plan, submit the permit, the contract and information.
Okay.
Maybe follow up the bill and review what we submitted right now. And it was, it was, but there's no changes.
Okay.
I think, just following up on what Barbara said, with the septic redesign that we talked about, we're gonna be probably twenty-five percent smaller. The house is a function of the size of the septic, so with a smaller septic, we'll pull them up and we'll give them the, the bigger, bigger.
And also, Brian, your discussions with, with Bill, I also, we'd also like to have a statement from them that, you know, because you're tying into their drainage system, they want to, they want to make sure they're not just okay with the driveway, but with the, with the additional flow from your, you know, private conveyance into their, their system, just to, to kind of close the loop on that.
Here's my question. And I, I, it's, it's commented in my letter and as we're talking about this stormwater easement, my curiosity is that the, the code says that when you're proposing a shared driveway, you have to demonstrate that individual driveways could be accomplished should they be pursued in the future. But it doesn't look like there's room for that with the law. That would conflict, that would put us in a situation where you could not demonstrate two separate driveways.
If they demonstrate frontage for both pieces, but with the creation of that-
With that pond, there was not-
The pond would not allow, would not permit the construction of two separate driveway and this is, that would be code.
Yeah, that puts us in an interesting situation. There might be a variance. There might be a variance.
Did you show, I don't know if you knew that, but did you show two driveways back then?
Uh, I don't know, I have to go back and review the file.
That you, Dan?
Do you remember what we do with it? Do you show two driveways?
I was typing, I didn't-
Is that paying attention?
Yeah.
I don't even remember.
You remember how we got the pond there? Was that, was that to address any legal concerns? Do we, because the code says for a common driveway, you gotta show the ability to show two driveways. I don't remember a pond there, the driveway here, flat shows, you know, the pole portions where if you were, you could, you know, ostensibly put two separate driveways, the pond there, you can only physically fit one.
Right, right.
I don't know if that was something that was looked at.
Well, I don't think it's been overlooked.
I mean, it makes sense that, everything's draining down this way, so that must've been-
Well, I, I question, I wonder when, whether, when MS4 came in, MS came in in 2005.
It may not have been the code.
The MS4 probably-
Is that two, do I have a seeker training now or the old one?
So, that kind of blows it out of the way, but I don't-
Well, the, the stormwater phase-
Wasn't this approved?
Stormwater phase two regulations went in, affected, I believe, in 2003, and there was various versions of general permit that didn't release an update in 2008, so-
I don't think we, I don't think we put our stormwater regs in our code till 2008.
When did the provision for showing two driveways?
Well, that was there before.
So, assuming we got this far or this door, can we, if that's that, someone-
Yeah, well, we'll look at that issue, I mean, the only question was, in essence, were, were there ponds shown on the last call?
Yeah. Pull up the old one.
Okay.
I'll see, I'll try to back into how we got there.
Yeah, okay. I don't think, I don't think it's much. I mean, the, the common driveway provision is there for purposes of 280A, which requires that in order to get building permit for a lot, and a building lot, it has to have frontage on a public highway.
Frontage on a main road, yeah.
So, that's really the, that's the rationale for that. I don't know, and I don't, Barbara, maybe we can look back at the files to see whether or not, because I would intonate, made a determination on that issue. Because the, the code provision is not, a lot of people think it's there so that if the property owners have a fight, that they could go in and put another driveway in. And that's really not why it's there. It's there because of 280A, because in order to get a building permit, you have to show that you can have access to a public highway. So, or, you know, you dispense with it under a different rationale, so, but yeah, we'll see what the determination is on that.
So, we'll circulate for lead agency, figure this out, and we'll touch base on March 6th?
Yeah, March 6th, yep.
Well, we have to schedule, as I was gonna say, we didn't, I don't think we voted, correct? We didn't vote on the March 6th date yet? All right. But there should be no reason to hold back on a public hearing at this point.
No.
No, okay. Entertaining a motion to schedule a public hearing for, for March the 6th. All right, motion's made?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Sounds good.
Okay, we'll see you then.
Yeah.
It is you.
It is you.
It's a little warm. Okay.
Who's in charge of the heat?
All right. So, okay, so moving things along here, we have a, we have a conceptual review for Unique Peacock Arts Studio.
Ladies and gentlemen, gentlemen, my name is Dario Felix.
How you doing?
Nice.
How you doing? So, you're the owner, the new owner of the property?
Yes.
Okay. Let's just do your application here. So, why don't you give us a quick description of what you're looking to do there, or what you are doing there, I guess?
What I'm looking to do is have a place, have my wife's group, she's working special education kids in the city, and she works with all, most of the schools in New York, and she's an art teacher, and she sets up shows and plays with the board ad, and she needed a place to work because she was working in my garage. So, I thought this simple thing turned out to be a big thing. So, what I, what she wants to do is just be able to place that she could go in here and do her craft- So what I, what she wants to do is just be able to place that she could go in here and do her crafts, set up her, her, uh, displays and everything else, to bring it back and forth to her job, to the jobs that she had within the city. So she wants to work out of it by herself and do whatever she gotta do.
Okay, so, so there'll be no way, so she'd be the only one working there?
Yes.
Possibly one other person, maybe helping her from time to time with different things?
Unless, if something picks up, just somebody coming up to pick the props and bring it back to the city, whatever, after she get them done or whatever.
Okay. So it's, it sounds like it's, it's more or less, you're using this as a storage facility?
Storage, yes.
Okay.
And yes, it is a storage facility.
Okay, um.
Is the ugly building, we wanna make it look a lot better than it looks, not being disrespectful.
Where exactly is it on ninety?
Across the street from the post office, if you're familiar and, and.
It's the white, it's the white block building there, used to be, um, most recently, there was Scotty's Garage.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, um, that's the one we're talking about. Alright, any of the board members have any?
No.
Any questions regarding?
You're gonna make it look pretty? I'm happy about that.
It's eyesore, and my wife said, oh, it's eyesore, I could do wonders with this building if I, it was working in. I said, okay. I tried to buy it for her in a sneak, and it turns out to be a headache, but.
We need an art teacher for every eyesore building.
Oh, she's good though, trust me.
What, what, um, in terms of just fixing up the building a little bit, would he proposing to do anything? I'm just out of curiosity.
Revitalize the front, but make it old with the, what would just charm, with the old lights and the bulbs and, you know. She's not planning to work out of there, but she wanted, she wanted to look nice.
Yep.
Because it doesn't look nice.
Yeah, no problem.
New doors, new windows, but she wanna keep the garage door because her props are big to come in and out.
Right, right, which, which makes sense. Yeah, so you get things in and out of there.
Two new windows, two new, the two new windows, redo the door, just redo the front, redo the pavement in the front to the back, just make it look presentable.
That's right.
Anybody have any, nothing else?
No, it sounds like a good plan to be.
No problem here.
No problem there. Alright, do we need to address anything? I mean, other, it sounds like it's.
So the deck, because if you took out building permits, the deck doesn't pose a setback problem, and it's not quite as big once you get back there. And it's, it's just a way for them to get in and out without tripping on the school stuff.
Okay.
It's a nice little step.
Okay, so the deck is reasonable for the.
Right, so because you have architectural approval, we didn't really know what to do with the dunes, so that's why you serious consumption of, you're paid with everything.
That area certainly needs some brightening up down there too. I mean, see any issues?
Yeah, yeah, it's a little, um, okay, um, but in terms of use, the use of the property is fine.
Yeah, so for the board, um, under the, so it's H, it's HM zone, right? And in the HM zone under retail, craft and artist study, artisan studios and shops is a permitted principal use.
Thank you.
There you go.
Permitted.
Beautiful.
For just personal use, right?
No, it's a business.
Yeah.
HM is a business, so.
Well, you say their application is personal, so would it be documented as personal or we?
No, it's, it's a.
As a restriction, or is it just for?
There's no, it's, it's actually under the retail category.
Okay.
So.
But you said it was gonna be for personal, you said?
Yes.
Let's not do this, what we did the last application.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's good.
Alright, um, okay, so basically, under the architectural review then, if that's all we're approving tonight, then it's really, uh, yeah, with, uh, right, regarding what was discussed tonight, um, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the architectural review. Okay, motion's made. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Huh?
I said, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, oh, you're welcome. You're welcome.
Good luck.
Alright, thank you. Alright, okay, so, next item we have on the agenda this evening is a miscellaneous discussion regarding Chelsea Farms subdivision.
Good evening, Dan Kohler with Hudson Land Design. So, we spoke about this briefly at the December fifth meeting, really about cleaning up the trees that we fell last spring. And since that time, the board basically directed the engineer to coordinate with Walter Artis, a meeting with myself, which we, which we had. I summarized some of that in this letter. Neither John or Walter are here, but we did copy them on the correspondence to the town, so, um, and I did run some of the language of the letter, uh, with them through email, just to confirm that that was the, that was the discussion we had. And at the end of the day, Walter says that he does not believe that this necessitates the, the, uh, notice of intent, or, uh, notice of intent to, uh, to get the speediest permit coverage for the stormwater, so. He offered to come to the site. I'll, I'll be going to the site periodically as well. The applicant has, has met with about three different tree clearing companies, all reputable, all larger companies. And, uh, and Walter would come to the site periodically as well, and offered that, you know, we could either draw off the existing escrow that's on the planning board escrow for the project, or we could even establish a different one to, to pay for his services to protect the town's interests.
Okay, I mean, we, we discussed this earlier, and I think it's, I mean, I thought the provision, the provision that was in the code, it says in order to go to this next step, the NOI had to be filed. Is that correct? Yeah, that had to be, the final, the final approval had to be, um, given, or I believe, you know, that usually includes the NOI being filed.
Well, the, the one issue with respect to, um, let me pull up the section. Because the, the section for tree, oh, it's in the sub, it's in subdivision? It's in the subdivision, right? I know seeker has to be complete, and. Let's see. Tree felling exception. It says, "A notice of intent and a stormwater pollution prevention plan shall be approved by the town if applicable." So, to the extent that Walter Artis says it's not required, because that was the issue, is if you're cutting trees and just felling them and leaving them, DEC has said that that's not considered to be land disturbance. So therefore, um, an NOI is not required. And, you know, so, to the extent that, you know, you cut them up on site and ship them, I don't, what's the, I, I don't, unfortunately, I don't have the benefit of Walter's letter.
Right, so I mean, I mean, usually the process is when they, you know, once they've, you know, they've dropped the trees, and it's, then it becomes an operation of, you know, now they're gonna, you know, clean up the stuff, they're gonna drag trees across the property, do stuff like that, so they are gonna create disturbance.
Right.
Right, so, you know, Walter's saying, so if we're, if we're talking about changing this, because again, this, this opens up the door to something different than what's been done in the past. So now we allow this, so the next time something happens, and we're in the same situation, and it gets thrown back as, well, you did this for this person.
Yeah, I, I mean.
You know, and that, and that's, that was the concern, that was the concern that everybody has brought up earlier.
He didn't prepare.
In terms of staff, now, you know, this is not coming from the board, this is, staff has brought this up. And it's. Right. Doesn't, no, the map, is the map signed yet?
It's not signed.
It's not signed, but it's, right.
The Health Department has signed it, so we're, we're at that point, yeah.
We're just waiting, because we asked you earlier, for a performance bond.
We have the performance bond for the felling originally, that's still in place.
But to sign your map, you have final approval.
Yeah, performance bond, recreation fees.
Correct. So we have, so, so there is a performance bond for the road then?
No, there was.
It's not in place. That's basically, that was, that, that's the issue.
We have a, we have, right, I, we approved a bond for restoration.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct, so that's the only thing that we have in place right now?
Correct.
Okay.
So I believe there were calculations that were done.
Yeah.
For what the performance bond is approved.
Correct, right, and. Right.
So, and I had discussions with their attorneys regarding the form of the security. We had a couple of different, you know, letter of credit, um.
Right, cash bond, right, cash.
U.S. Securities, because there's, you know, the code where you can in essence place treasury bonds in a, in a, in an account, and then, because that was one of the, that was kind of what they wanted to do, because they wanted to file the, file the map and then sell the property. So, and that was the easiest way to get back, um, after it was transferred. So, I mean, that's where this project, the, the project is basically at that level. And I know there's been some complaints from the residents in the area.
Yeah.
About the condition of the property.
Right.
You know, so, uh, but again, um, you know, if, if Walter would issue a letter saying he does not believe that under the seeker regulations, it constitutes a disturbance that requires an NOI, I, I think I'd be comfortable with that.
Yeah. Alright, so we'll, so we have to, so we need a letter from, from Walter. And additionally, then, we would need, because I believe then you need an additional escrow, because if we're, Walter's gonna be doing inspections, um, that should be established as well.
I guess that's a question.
Outside of the, you know, outside of anything that's there for restoration.
So, he has a planning board escrow?
Right.
I just have to see how much is in there, and then I have to just bring it up a little to make it longer for the kids.
Sure.
But until the map is signed by the chairman and filed, we keep that planning board escrow, and we wait, because consultants here have to look at that final map if we assign it. So usually, once the map is filed, we have a sixty day window before the applicant can ask for any money back. So I know we still have money in place. I'll just have to verify how much. And this code also requires improved restructuring, and the, the building department and Walter should be present at, so that we're on the same page of what you're doing before the phone calls are.
Sure.
And I guess, I guess.
Welcome that.
And the board.
I guess the other question is, do, um, Dan, estimate about how long this would take?
So, we, we've gotten varying, but it's basically two to three weeks.
Is there a timeframe also as well on this, getting this taken care of? Because I mean, it's, that, that's my other concern is, alright, you know, we've approved, we've approved the subdivision. Never got completed, you know, now we get to this point, you know, and if we, if we approve this now, is this actually gonna be followed through to, to, you know, to completion, to at least get the property cleaned up? That's the other issue.
That's the intent, is to get all those trees picked up, absolutely. And the, the timeframe right now that he's looking at is February, which makes sense in terms of the ground being hard if.
Well, normally, normally, yes. Yeah, this is an unusual year.
Yeah.
Alright. Does the board, has arrested a board feel regarding approval to clean this up?
Just chipping up trees and taking the logs out, not digging the stumps up, right?
Absolutely no stumping. That, that would constitute soil disturbance, so.
So it's just cleaning, just cleaning up what's down now?
Yes.
Okay.
As long as it doesn't put us in a bad spot, president wise.
Yeah. Okay, um.
So basically, we need two things, and we need a letter from Walter Artis officially documenting this. And additionally, we need confirmation regarding the escrow, but if there's a planning escrow, that would just mean making sure the escrow is replenished in order to cover the inspections. And then a window of time, so a window of time, if, if they're looking at this done in February, then would it be proven to say to have everything completed and stabilized by, you know, March thirty first? So that this is closed out and done as a condition.
I guess that's a question, Dan, what happens, what's gonna happen after the tree, I mean, do we know what's under the trees? Is it, will you need to do any kind of seeding or?
Walter's opinion was that, you know, obviously, when a tree falls, there might be a little bit of soil disturbance, where a branch hits, whatever else, uh, we figured that we would throw wood chips down, which is a great instant stabilization practice.
Okay.
Uh, in any areas that were disturbed, and that might include any, you know, if there's any kind of rutting as a result of any of the vehicles or anything like that, and, uh, you know, Walter view on that, I would be on that, making sure that the.
Yeah, I mean, if Walter would put that in the letter.
Is this a, a flat site, Dan?
Uh, it rolls, it rolls, but it's, the, the main area of the development is a, is a relatively gentle slope.
Because I've had issues with wood chips being used for stabilization on steep slopes. They just wash right away and they do nothing.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't.
Yeah, it's a relatively, uh, relatively gentle.
Alright, so, do we, do we feel as if we, we approve it now, and then staff will follow up with the rest of this? So regarding this, so just to recap, they, they need the letter, need the letter from Walter Artis. Work is to be completed with, you know, I guess by the end of February, with soil stabilization completed by the end of March.
Ever, yeah.
Right? Okay, so, so we want to entertain a motion to go ahead and approve the tree removal, um, based upon those conditions.
I'll move that.
Second.
Okay, motion made. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries.
Very good, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good night.
Alright. So we have, um, last item on the agenda here is Alpine Commons regarding lead agency. Again, that's, uh, I guess they're in front of the, or, they're in front of the ZBA currently, but that lead agency request hasn't been sent out at this time, to my understanding?
Correct.
The letter has not yet been circulated.
Okay. Alright. So there should be no concerns, I guess, regarding this, because this, uh, for the planning board, because it seems that there's, you know, it's not just the variances for what they're looking for, um, but I guess there's also the subdivision as well.
So, actually, right now, it would be no subdivision, it would just be a site plan, assuming that the variance is granted.
And a special permit for mixed use.
Yes, mixed use special permit and a site.
So there'll be no, so there'll be no subdivision then?
Not on this current application.
Yeah.
I don't know, so.
Is that, I mean, I just wanna, you know, the question is, is that we're basing, you know, we're basing everything regarding the entire property for the variance, for a density variance.
Correct.
Right, so it's based upon the entire property, so, you know, the, the intent of the applicant is to subdivide the property to take the apartments.
It's actually not, so.
It's on the rec, it's on the record, it's on the, it's on the videos that states that they're subdividing the property.
Yeah, I don't. Yeah, I don't.
I believe, I forgot to bring my notes with me, but I believe it's Diamond Properties had, I forgot the.
Let me pull up the.
Yeah, they're lopping it off, and I believe they needed to have ownership of the property in order to get their.
Well, they did before, but on this CBA application, I do not believe.
I believe that was, I believe it was at the ZBA meeting is when they discussed that.
I mean.
Yeah, I watched, I watched the video, so, because I was curious, there's a bunch of people had asked me some questions. Guys, one meeting, please? Yeah, I, somebody asked me some questions, so I had watched the video, and in the beginning, prior to the attorney showing up, there was discussed that, you know, that they're, you know, looking to subdivide the property. So I just wanted to discuss the concerns, you know, that the planning board has, because again, it's a site plan approval, yes, but at the same time, you know, some of these variances are based upon, you know, they're using it based upon the entire property.
Which is the reason why they didn't ask for a subdivision.
How would they subdivide it off, and now it's no longer a mixed-use parcel, it's a multifamily parcel, that doesn't?
It would be a multi, right, it would be, no, there's questions that I'm just raising, I just want to, I just want to throw it out on the table.
Aren't they asking for variances on something that requires a special use permit before they have the special?
Well, yes, it does, it does require a special use permit.
How can you get a variance before you have the special use permit?
Yeah, that's, that's the.
That's my question.
Yeah.
And a special use permit when it's not allowed, it won't let the code as it stands.
Right.
So you couldn't even put an application.
Right. Well, I believe it's, I believe the residential, you're allowed three units per acre.
Right.
And they're asking for a variance from that.
They're using the whole site, they're saying they're entitled.
Right, because they're trying to, they're trying to work it in terms of, you know, the ratio aspect of it.
They subdivide it and at 10 acres, they're entitled to 30.
But they're also proposing, they're talking about more than 90, right?
144, weren't they?
So they're asking for a height variance and a density variance.
Right, right. And just each of the, each of the, right, each of the three, each of the three variances work off of one other, one another. So the height variance is going to require, you know, you know, more, you know, in terms of density and parking, because now you're asking for a full floor, you know, so you're asking for a variance for the parking because you've created more floor space, so, or more units, per se. And, you know, and additionally, the, you know, the density, the density is all, so I mean, they're all kind of intertwined in one another without, without a site plan being even looked at.
Without an application.
We're, yeah, right. That's, that's the question.
Yes, so according to their seeker EAF Part 1, their planning board approval is site plan application and special permit for mixed use, so they are not seeking a subdivision under the, according to their secret.
According to their EAF.
Right, according to their secret document, right, so.
That's their plan.
Right.
Yeah.
But the applicant said that they were looking to subdivide the property.
I think he misspoke.
I think they would find it exceedingly difficult.
I, yeah.
And the parking, they're not asking for, they're asking for it to be raised and reduced.
Yeah, but they're not before this board, so they're not asking for a waiver, they're asking for a variance for the parking?
The part of the reduction, they want, sometimes, like 288, they want 238. So they're not even looking to have, they're looking one and a half for each park.
Yeah, and.
Which is what they were, yeah, that's the number.
The lead agency thing, though, this is not something that the zoning board.
It just, I want to just, yeah, and another thing I just want to put out there, because I know that I've had these discussions, you know, this board has approved the Old Hope Well Commons project. After that was built out, I know that, at least I had a discussion with Barbara regarding things that we should look for going forward, because a couple of things kind of slipped through the cracks over there. Visitor parking wasn't really addressed. You know, that project, I guess, kind of lacked a little bit of, you know, a little bit of parking over there. Not only because of the visitor spots, but also too, and, you know, today's day and age, I mean, most households have two cars now.
At least.
Yeah, so regardless, you know, the one and a, you know, the one and a half, you know, is a minimum, but then, at the same time, you're still getting, you're still going to have an overflow, you know, and it's not even, it hasn't even been discussed in terms of a site plan, and we're, you know, just going to get a variance on it.
Well, the one thing that was discussed was that parking variance doesn't take into account the existing BJ's parking lot. So this was just for parking, you know, near the buildings.
So where are the parks? You have two people in, minimal, two people in an apartment.
Right.
In BJ's.
So you really, minimally, maybe 288, and then another couple of minutes comes, or they're required to shop.
It's the, right. In terms of, in terms of a planning perspective, I know that we've, you know, a lot of things that we've done here have become, you know, you know, lesson learned type of thing. You know, we did this, we approved this, but then after the fact, once it's built out, we're kind of finding out, well, that might not have been the best approach to that. Or, you know, we waived something, you know, a parking, you know, you know, for parking, we waived, you know, a parking requirement, you know, and then we find out that the site is, you know, is short on parking. Let's see, the other thing, the, but these things keep coming, you know, these keep coming out, and, you know, before, before this board is even looking at this project for a site plan, they're just going for variances for everything. And I know that, you know, speaking to members of the board, you know, in between meetings, you know, some people have reached out to me and said, hey, you know, what do you think about this? And, you know, is this legit? And I think that the reason I asked to have this put on the schedule this evening is because, you know, I don't think that the board is going to consent to the ZBA being lead agency when the project hasn't, you know, there's too many, there's too many open-ended issues. So, I mean, and then at that point, where does it go from there? Who makes that final decision of where it's going to go? Does this go up to the DEC for, you know, for them to make that judgment?
Well, there's, there's a couple of ways that this could play out, Jim and I have discussed it, because it's oddly complicated. But it would go to the DEC if the ZBA wanted to serve as lead agency and the planning board contested that and also wanted. And you've got two boards both vying to be lead agency, then the DEC would make the determination. Another possibility is that the ZBA does not want to be lead agency, and when they circulate, the letter reads, someone's got to be lead agency for this. Somebody wants to be lead agency, speak up in 30 days, and if no one says anything, we'll have to do it, at which point this board would express their intention to be lead agency, and then you don't have a situation where you've got two boards who want it.
Right.
Because the ZBA is battling.
It just seems so out of their purview to me, honestly. They do decks, setbacks, things like that.
Mrs. Moore, Laura Allen. I mean, the one issue is, there's no application pending before this board intentionally.
I understand that, I understand that, yeah, and that's as of the applicant's choice.
Right.
Correct.
But the ZBA has expressed that they, when they come back, will ask them to come to you, minimally, if you're opinion.
Right, I mean, that's the other issue. Is that even.
No, and I, right, I understand.
Even if this board does not serve as lead agency, as an involved agency, it participates in the seeker process.
Yeah.
And makes all the comments that it, that it would make ordinarily in seeker process. So the fact that the ZBA is lead agency does not shut this board out of commenting in the seeker process.
Right. But what I'm saying is, sometimes, we discuss a lot of things before we're done with that process to change things, or to ask the applicant to tweak their plan to make it more, possibly more conforming, instead of walking in the door and saying, you know, here, this is what, this is what we want.
And I, I think.
This is what we want, and it's, yeah, and again, they're rolling the dice with the board, because it's either, you know, technically with them, it's an all or nothing thing.
We've never seen a solid plan here, in my eyes. We've seen what was supposed to be similar to Eastdale.
Yeah.
Then that faded away into what we have now, which we're not even sure what we have.
But I, I mean, and that's the other issue. I mean, to the extent this board, you know, again, whether this board serves as lead agency or not, you can make all those comments during the seeker process to tweak, you know,
No, I understand, right, I understand that.
Because that's one of the things, is the seeker, the seeker process is not your approval process.
Correct.
They're too separate.
Right.
They're too separate.
But, right, it does, but it does, right, it does, but it ties our hands to whether or not it's going to conform with, you know, conform with the land, with the property.
Right.
Worrying about, you know, what it's going to look like from Route 9, what it's going to, you know, what it's going to look like, you know, from the adjoining neighbors, things like that. So, I mean, those things are usually what's happens here in this venue, as opposed to the planning board, or to the zoning board, I mean. So, you know, and that's fine, I just, I just think there's, you know, watching, talking to different people and then watching what was said at, you know, the ZBA meeting, it kind of raises some concerns. You know, they do talk about financing, that they're going to be using, you know, financing which is going to require them to have their own, you know, to have it on their own land, not on somebody else's land. So, that's, you know, those type of things are, you know, so the subdivision really isn't out of the, it's not out of the question here at this point. So does the, where does the process go then? If they get the variances, that just goes with that piece at that point?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, and then the ZBA can put all kinds of conditions that, it's conditioned upon.
Right.
Particular site plan.
So, but if the ZBA, the ZBA could technically approve this and say, okay, well, you know, we're going to approve your variances, but you can't subdivide the land, and then that would be, that would be an acceptable condition?
Based on the application they made with respect to density, sure.
Okay. So if we, right, so it's, I'm just saying, as the comments get made, you know, regarding this board with the subdivision process, and that gets sent to them and they make that determination, then that's, that carries with the variance then.
Yeah, I mean, because the application, you know, the density calculations that they're requesting, the density variance is based on the.
Right, it's based upon the entire property, that's, that's the, right, that's what the sale is.
Correct.
Right.
So to the extent that they make a change, you know, it would violate, you know, they wouldn't be able, the variances for the entire site, it doesn't. Never, never experienced the density variance where somebody went back and tried to subdivide it subsequently. It would, theoretically, probably.
Sure.
Because if they were thought of subdividing, then almost probably it was a variance, it's already considered very substantial.
Correct.
So if they subdivide it, you can predict.
Right, and you're putting this on a smaller lot, that's what I'm getting to.
So theoretically, the variance would not, would, you know, if you're dividing 20, 15 acres of a 90-acre lot, then the density would carry over.
But you would not have the number of units.
But you don't, you wouldn't have the same number of units. You know, even theoretically, if it carried over.
But all that would be pre-construction, correct? Like if they wanted to subdivide after it was built?
After it was built, then that's, that's where the problem comes in, yeah. It's, now it's built, but then it has to come back here, you know. I mean, the board, you know, the board at that time turns around and says, well, we're not going to approve a subdivision because it was based upon the property being a whole.
Right.
Right.
The density would not be in conformance with.
So that would answer, so that would answer that question.
Right.
Because that would be the out for the subdivision, you couldn't subdivide it unless the, unless the applicant, you know, unless, you know, it was part of the process.
Third and whatever.
Yeah. There's got to be some kind of order to it, right?
Yeah, it's a, because everything seems askew, you know?
I mean, density, density is calculated on a per-acre basis, not total number of units, so, you know, you reduce the number of acres, you reduce, you know, the number of units.
Correct.
But yet they still want the 144 if you want to make a financial feasible, so the variance would be outside.
Right.
Well, they said they were allowed to have 90, right? 93, was that?
If they're basing it on the entire site.
On the entire site.
Right.
So if they chop a little piece off, then instead of having 90, they only have 10 acres.
Might go down to 30, right, and that's the.
They're not chopping out BJ's or the parking lot or anything like that, make sure.
Okay.
And BJ's had called recently, they wanted to try to go back to a gas station, a lot of apartment. Unfortunately, when we took the gas stations out of certain zones, it took a lot of shopping, so they need a town for text amendment. But it would also, then I think, kill the apartment, they need that land, and it'll leave any apartment up there.
That's where they were going to put the rest of the, the rest of the.
Yeah.
For the future development parcel.
Hopefully.
So there's a lot in the air.
Well, it's a, it's a complicated process when it's regular and it's.
Well, when it's, right, and it becomes, it becomes, it becomes difficult when it's a, when the, you know, with the text amendments they proposed, it was difficult because it's all in concept, it's all conceptual. And when you provide a, you know, a concept plan, it may never get built out, that's the problem. You know, and the only thing that, the only thing that was stuck from the beginning was, hey, we have apartments.
Yeah.
And this is all it was, so we're just, this, and basically, this whole process has been, has been driven around the apartments. You know, that's, you know, which is, you know, which is fine, it's just the fact that, the fact that is, you know, the density now, you know, because, again, I, they did make mention that, you know, a gentleman from, I believe it was Dakota Properties, was standing there at the podium and said that this was going to be, you know, that they were subdividing this property off. So, that changes things. You know, it's not based upon the Cuddy and Fader's letter that says, you know, they were looking at it based upon the entire property.
Right, right.
And they were using, they were also using a floor area ratio between, which is also in the code between the, you know, between retail versus residential. So using everything, but when you subdivide it, now that all goes away.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then a lot comes back from the mixed use. Yeah.
Yeah. So, but it's, again, that's, that's why I think we wanted this on the agenda tonight, was have this discussion regarding Alpine. I mean, you know, as I, you know, when we get that, when we get that, you know, that circulation at some point, then, you know, the board will do what, what they need to do. Okay. So with that point, is there any other, any other items we want to discuss this evening? All right. Do we, I know there was some discussion in the past, do we want to, does the board this year want to put out for an RFP for professional services? Is the board interested in doing that this year?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Anybody else? Yeah, all right. So make a motion to have the secretary advertise for, put out an RFP for professional services for the board, for the planning board? Okay. And I guess we'll take that up at a future date.
One other item, you don't have to make a decision tonight, the next meeting or two, we should have a vice chair.
Yes, I forgot about that too, yes, we need to do that. That was something that we did push off to the beginning of the year. So if we could put that out for the next, make that decision in the next meeting, put that as an item of discussion at the end of the meeting? Okay. With that said, entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, sorry, yeah. Somebody make a motion to have the authorized secretary to put out for an RFP?
So moved.
Second.
Motion vain, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay. With that, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, seconded.
Okay, motion vain, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're adjourned.